Testing product, or what?
The gun.
Researching. What size of the blazes in here?
Well, I don't know if it's just me.
Well, he thinks you're getting hot. No.
I was just...
There was time. There was time.
Good morning. Today is August 6, 2018. It's 9 o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Please rise from your seats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3, any citizens are being rehearsed. All right, hearing then, we'll move on to item 4, consideration of possible action on approving minutes of July 31, 2018.
And I'll make the motion to approve.
On second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item 5. We have no ODOT representatives here at this time, so it's hard to have a meeting with them. So we'll, without objection, we'll go ahead and save that for later in the meeting if they have to show up.
Sounds good.
Yep. All right. So, item 6 is the same thing. We were kind of waiting on Chad Meisenberg. He said he would be here to talk about this, but he's not here yet. So we'll, again, wait on them to get here.
I'm ready.
You? Okay. All right. Item 7, consideration of possible action to approve FY 2018, 2019 juvenile detention contract.
I'll move with approved.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 8, consideration of possible action on resolution appointing...
Oh, lost it.
I have none for items 8 and 9.
Okay. Well, it's appointing requisitioning officers. First count, number 9, was receiving officers. So we have none. Item 10, consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
I have none on the consent agenda. I don't have any transfers for this fiscal year. These are transfers from last fiscal year to this fiscal year.
Backing up. Thought I'd say it for you, dude. That's really kind of making humor during my lockdown.
I'll move with approved the agenda items, the consent agenda items.
Second. Have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Item 11. Consideration of possible action on approving temporary road crossing permits. Brookman Fast Line. Cross or parallel county road 1 mile north and south of Council and 720 northwest and southwest corner of Section 5, 17 north, toward left. It's a 3-inch.
I'll make the motion with approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Recede for 10 minutes or so until they show up, or you want us to march in?
I think that's a great idea. I'm sure. Go into recess for 10 minutes. We'll come back at 9:21. It is now 9:21. I'd like to call the meeting of the Logan County Board of Commissioners back to order from our recess. We'll go back to item number 5, meeting with ODOT reps on preparing, pertaining to 5-year SERV plan, consideration of possible action on completion of 5-year SERV plan. For those in the room, we have Shannon Schiffer from ODOT Local Government on speakerphone. Good morning, Shannon. Welcome.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Shannon, do you mind telling these guys what y'all expect from us on the 5-year?
What I need, what the, we need from the counties and then ultimately from the Circuit Engineering Districts is the priority list of where you're going on your projects. If you had intended to use any of your STP funds on any bridge project, you know, STP bridge funds, you know, which project you were going to try and associate that to. And then the next, the most important things that we need from you is a priority list of what we're working on on the... Hang on just a second. The priority list on your projects that you need to build in the next, you know, year and couple of years. Meaning, you know, is for Logan County is your priority number one? The next phase, Coltrane Road? Would that be number one? Or whatever you guys want to do. And then are you trying to get some right-of-way utilities associated with your Waterloo Road? I-35 air change, you know, to support that part of it? What other bridge projects you have associated in your 5-year plan? And then with the road, it's also out there in your 5-year plan. So all of that stuff, we kind of need to know. The priority list from what the counties are needing there.
Okay. Hey, when we get this listed together, do you care what kind of format it's in?
No, not really.
Okay.
Just get, do something there.
Okay. Well, I thought we had a problem with that last year, so I just wanted to make sure we had it on the right document or whatever.
Hey, Shannon, this is Marvin. Good morning, sir. How you doing?
Good morning. Yes, sir.
Hey, I've got a couple of questions just in my own mind. I know what the legislature did to our SERV funds this last year. I mean, they just went hog wild and raided them pretty hard. So I was, I was kind of a little bit curious. Last year, when we talked about our SERV 5-year plan, we had just under $13 million to work with, is what we were told. And we overexpended on, we had five projects... Yeah. Five projects that we had on our list at that time. And we overexpended by about a half a million dollars. And at that time, my understanding was we thought that that would be okay. I mean, we as a collective, we... Yeah. And you said that we thought we could maybe cover that. However, that was without knowing what the legislature was going to do to us after that in that fund.
Correct.
So now, we've gone from $12,873 and change down to we don't know. I guess what I'm asking, can you kind of give me an idea of how much we've got to plan for as we prioritize these projects that we've got?
I don't have any sort of figures like that with me right now. I think the bigger thing that would be helpful from you guys is, you know, take what we've got, what you've got as your most recent engineering estimates on any and all your projects, if you know those estimates. Just use that as, you know, even if it comes out to be, say, $20 million in... But we still are going to have to, you know, go up the priority list. And then we'll just go as far as we can with the dollars we have available. And we may only be able to pick up three of the five or six projects. You don't want to include in the current 5-year, in this upcoming 5-year plan. And then if the legislature either adds more or takes something away, we're going to make adjustments just like we did this past year.
Okay. So let me, we've got two items on our agenda today. One was the 5-year plan, and I think you've kind of got us going forward on that. We can kind of prioritize what we've got there. The other one was to talk about the Coltrane Road project. And I had received an email from Chad basically saying that there was $2,507,000 and change that was there in the SERV program to be used for that. And then the $900,000 and change from the federal grant. We've got this, we've got this, a project agreement that he sent to us to approve or disapprove, to take action on today. And I was, we were kind of wanting to get a clarification on that. Chad said he would be here to talk about that, but he may have got delayed in traffic or something. I'm not sure. I haven't heard from him yet. But...
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure that he's going to be able to make it today. But the, you know, the idea, go ahead and, you know, take action one way or the other on that Coltrane Road to keep that moving forward. And it's just like the other 45 or 50 projects that have CIRB and improvements roads and bridges funds associated with them that have been slid from May, June, July lettings till we start to get back to an even or neutral position on the CIRB funds. Because after the governor's veto and that legislative action, what happened is they took out more than we had in covered. You know, more funds were removed than we had money in covered for construction and, you know, right-of-way utilities and all that. So that's why we made a conscious effort to delay. We're not stopping any of them, but we've delayed the lettings on these projects until we can get back to a neutral or positive position.
Okay. That's, that's great news because it's a little bit different than what we were told. That it was, I think the term that was used was shelved.
Right. Well, we are literally putting these projects that are ready to go, just like your Coltrane Road project, on the shelf, awaiting this funding.
So, again, Chad indicated that if, with a positive signature on this resolution for Coltrane, that it would be let in September and contract awarded in October.
Well, he didn't quite have all the information available to him when he was putting that together. That was, that's our fault, my fault, for not having everything together for him.
Well, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask you, can... I mean, this is kind of the first, we're hearing about this. And I, as a Board of Commissioners, you know, we're responsible to take action on these things. And gosh, it would have been nice to kind of have that information up front somehow. But we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and work through it as we can. But, you know, we were told, also told by, maybe you can help clear this up. The CED 5 manager told us that there was $2 million there for us somewhere. And I'm not sure where that $2 million came from, or where that number came from, or how that was determined. Can you kind of help us out with that a little bit?
I'm not familiar with that, what we're talking about there. That doesn't ring a bell. I don't know where that is. You know, let me go back to a little bit more on how we're going back to putting projects back on the letting, as, you know, taking them off the shelf and putting them on the lettings. The, we first started putting projects on the shelf when we canceled all of the CIRB projects for the May letting. We had, you know, projects from across the state that were, some of them were ready to go, ready to be on the letting. And after the legislature adjourned, and they did not add any funds back in to replenish the 30 or the 80 million dollars that they took out last year. That's when we put the brakes on because we had been moving forward with the anticipation of, some of the hope that they might reinstitute those funds. And it didn't happen. So that's why we stopped on the lettings. The only projects that we've let since then, beginning in June and then in July, have been a few typically small county bridge projects where the Commissioners used either local funds, like Oklahoma County did, or several other counties and CEDs used ETR funds to offset the CIRB funds to keep it on the letting and also to match the STP funds that they had in there. And that offsets, you know, if you've got a million-dollar project and you, it had $800,000 of STP bridge funds and then the $200,000 of SERV. Well, in that case, the counties may have used the AC, I mean, the ETR, emergency transportation for golfing funds to cover that CIRB portion, the local match portion. For the, for the time being, we've let about six or seven projects. But that's, that's, and we've still got a couple on the August and a couple on the September letting. But now that we've had a couple of deposits, let's see, the first deposit comes here in August. We've also closed out some encumbrances across the state where we had, like, maybe we overestimated the right-of-way or we didn't need something on the construction. The construction came in less than needed. So we released some funds back into the CIRB program. Again, it stays within your respective field division, but it still goes back into the CIRB program. That's getting us back towards a positive cash balance. And the first month that we anticipate that's going to be October. So we've got about $12 to $15 million worth of projects that we're going to let in October. And that started, and do that again in November. We don't have a December letting. So we'll probably have a large January letting, maybe upwards of $30 million on the January. But we're working our way through all the projects that are on the shelf, which can include your next phase of Coltrane Road. Did that help clarify that we're, you know, none of these projects are lost? They've just been delayed, waiting for that CIRB fund to build back up again.
Yeah. So I understand what you said, Shannon. I'm still a little bit disappointed that the last official correspondence that I had from you guys was back in March, that March-April timeframe, that we were going to have a July letting for the Coltrane Road project. And that I'd never received anything from ODOT saying that that had changed. Until after the July letting, and I looked at it and I couldn't find it. I made an inquiry.
That's my fault. I apologize for that. And my staff has been told to, you know, keep... Our communications were more open on stuff like that. But it caught some of them by surprise, too. But it's, you know, I failed you guys on notifying you that this project has been delayed. We didn't get any official correspondence to you.
Shannon, this is Troy. Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning. You mentioned that some of the counties were using ETR, which is a loan to the county. Is the anticipation they're going to use SERV funds to repay that loan? And if so, how are they connecting that legally?
We put together an agreement, just another agreement in front of you guys that states that if you use the ETR funds, that it will be repaid back out of that CIRB fund out of 2019 plan when it becomes available there. So that's, that's just what we're doing in those other situations. Now, you know, in our situation for, and I'm going to use Coltrane Roads as an example, you probably have about $2 million out of the $3 million project that's CIRB. That's hard to come up with that much local funds, either ETR or local funds, to cover that portion. And so most, well, all situations where we've got large roadway projects are either mostly funded or 100% funded with the CIRB funds. Those are being slid back, and most likely those will be let in January, February, or March timeframes when it do become, when the fund gets back big enough again. But right now, the only two that we've got at all on the Sept, October letting is a large Bonnettock and a large, if you can get second, oh, Carter County project. And that, those two roadway projects, oh, and there's one more bridge project in there somewhere, that takes up the capacity of the $15 million of our October letting. I don't recall what we've got on for the November letting right now. But there, I will tell you this. There is priority being given to the divisions. I didn't say the Circuit Engineering Districts. I said to the divisions that have the largest positive balance, meaning the ones that have been the slowest on delivering projects. And that is Division 3 out of Shawnee Ada area. And then the next two that are right behind that is the Division 7 out of Duncan and the Division 1 out of Muskogee. Those guys are, those divisions and Circuit Engineering Districts, in those cases, they're one and the same, the Division and Circuit Engineering Districts. They have projects that are ready to go, and they are the ones that are the farthest behind on delivering. Your division with Logan and Payne and Oklahoma County, as well as the other six counties in your field division there, from Canadian County to Grant County and K County, all have been very successful because of projects like your piece of Coltrane Road and Country Club Road up there in Payne County and Deer Creek in, in Oklahoma County there, as well as the number of other projects in Division 4. the number of other projects in Division Four. Therefore, your division is, they're, they're gonna get their projects. It's just, there's gonna be some priority given to the ones that are behind right now. That's something that's been presented at, at the, uh, ACO meetings recently.
Okay, well, Shannon, I'd, I'd like to add just one thing to that, right? And, and that is, over, over the past several years, um, and even before I, I got here four years ago, Logan County had been under-executing because we didn't have, we weren't given the funds, uh, or we weren't, we weren't, uh, aware of the funds that we had to use. I mean, I think my first CED meeting here, somebody jumped up and said they found like $3 million in SERV funds for us and, uh, because somebody else had been over-executing. And anyway, my point is, is that Logan County hasn't been, uh, one of those counties that's, uh, uh, taken advantage of all of those, uh, projects. We're just now trying to get caught up. And, and again, last year, we were told we had like almost 13 million dollars to work with and now we don't have any money to work with. I'm, I'm, I'm just still really, really stumped by that.
I'll just stop you right there, sir. I'd like to interrupt and say, you're not out of funds. There are funds available in Division Four and there's, you know, you're still gonna need to keep working and prioritizing projects overall. And, and it's, it's not like you don't have any funds. It's just there are other projects in the five-year plan also that you're gonna be working with, with the rest of the counties in your circuit engineering districts. So you didn't go from 13 million down to nothing. You, you still have
How much?
That we're gonna be counting towards your next five years. So like I said, when you're putting together your five-year plan, you just need to prioritize that and we'll take that, you know, maybe up to 12 or 13 million dollars of, of the next five years. As said, we're putting this plan together, sir.
So we, we went from almost 13 million dollars to we don't know. Is that what you're telling me then?
I don't have those figures with me. I'm sitting on a porch in Virginia, so I don't have those figures with me right now.
Shannon, we wish, we were sitting on a porch somewhere. Um, I do have a couple of questions on this prioritizing because you know that we have at least one project that has STP funds and those have a timeframe on them. So does ODOT have a plan in place, not just for our county that has this federal commitment, but for any project with a federal commitment? Do, has ODOT put into gear a plan to help keep those funds available and saved if ODOT isn't able to get these projects done in the timeframe that those funds are guaranteed?
Yes, that's, that's what we're working on. And the main thing with federal funds, and, and I'm gonna make up an example because I don't have one here in front of me, but let's say we had a project that's eligible and it's, it's, uh, I'm gonna call it Foggy Creek in Logan County and we were gonna associate a half a million dollars of STP funds on that. And we'd anticipated putting it on the September letting. Well, something comes up. We didn't get the right of way, or no, we, we got the right of way, but we don't have the funds available. This, like the example that we're talking about here, we don't have the, the county matching funds. We can still authorize the federal funds on that Foggy Creek project that I just made up in September and that captures that. Even if, even if we were using 2018 funds, which we're, you're running, we're getting to the end of 2018 fiscal year right now, we authorize those either in September, October. That captures those funds and we can let that pretty much any time in the next year and still utilize those funds. So we're not gonna lose them. And same thing with the, um, ACO funds that we're associating with your Coltrane Road project. We'll get those authorized, uh, here in this, I think this is 2019 fund that we're anticipating use. Maybe it's 2018 STP funds. We'll see if we get those authorized in the correct year. That captures and, and ties those funds to that project. And then we'll work through the letting schedule so that we get that thing out to letting and utilize those STP funds and the CRB funds.
Okay. What cri- what criteria is being used to, to decide who gets a project when?
That's, I don't have that information here in front of me, but that's, uh, some of the stuff that was been presented at the most recent, uh, ACO statewide meetings, uh, at the ACO officer and the OCC ED board meeting, and then also that was discussed at the ACO conference in the Cav meeting and then the county engineers meeting of this past week by Mr. Hewitt. Basically, like I said, the funding is looking at what projects have, or the number of projects have been let in each field division, not number of projects, but number of dollars let in each one of the field divisions divided by the total amount that's been available. And that gives a priority ranking to the circuit engineering districts that are, I'm gonna call it, behindest. That's the, the term I'm gonna use, behindest. When that happens to be Circuit Engineering District Four, Circuit Engi- Engineering District One, no, CED Four, Division Three, that's one and the same. And then, um, uh, Division One and CED Two, that's the same. And then Division Seven and Circuit Engineering District Six, those are the three that are behind us. And then when you go to the other extreme, the district that's been the most, uh, successful in delivering project and that they've recently come to that stage has been, uh, CED One or Division Eight. And right now, they are actually in the negative of, of funds because they've, after the legislature taking in it, if the legislature hadn't taken the funds, uh, you know, the $230 million, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We'd still be letting projects out here. But that's where we're at. And, you know, as bad as it, it hurts the counties, ODOT has lost 840 million dollars in that same timeframe. That's taken some of our projects completely out of the fight, or the eight-year plan and set us back. So where ODOT has been hit even harder than the counties here.
The whole state for infrastructure got screwed over. I think we all can admit that. I have one more question and I just wanna clarify since I'm the one typing this up. You just want, you just want a piece, a, a page with a JP number, the name of the project and a total dollar amount we estimate to, to do that project. That's, that's as simple as you want.
That would be very helpful.
Pardon me?
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
And then if you know, uh, like on your Coltrane Road project, how much you anticipate the, uh, the federal funds are, well, we'll, we'll fill that number in because we've got that. And then also, if you would, go back to your, um, uh, resolution. I think you guys are going to take action on the, uh, res- or the agreement for Coltrane Road, uh, combining the federal funds and the SERV funds. I'd recommend going ahead and that keeps that project moving too and ready to go one of these days.
Okay.
All right, Shannon, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you, folks.
Oh, just wondering about the Waterloo project and I guess that'll take a priority. And, uh, I think we already did a resolution on that.
I've got together an estimate of what you think is gonna be needed out there on that Waterloo Road project. Uh, it wouldn't surprise me that you'll need a half a million dollars, place of right of way, a half a million dollars for, uh, utility relocation. You might even need more than that on the utility relocation there. Think that's gonna be an expensive part of that.
I think so.
Well, Shannon, thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks.
You guys have a good day. We'll talk to you later. Give me a call if you need anything else.
Thank you.
Okay, back to item five. Uh, that was the ODOT rep onto the, our, our five-year plan or basically a prioritization of, of the projects that we've got here. And, uh, I guess Mike, uh, not wanting to speak for you, but, uh, on the Luther Road, Waterloo to Charter Oak, that would be, um, not.
Not being the last priority of both the Coltrane as well as the Waterloo project.
So did the, the Waterloo, uh, what is that? Waterloo, what are we calling that? Waterloo Center, Waterloo?
Yeah, Waterloo Center, I-35 Exchange, interchange.
Okay, Waterloo I-35. Do we remember what, how much money that was?
$3 million was the commitment.
I think you're right. Waterloo I-35, I thought so.
I would note on this sheet that I, that y'all are looking at, um, that first, uh, project, Coltrane Phase Two comes off.
Right.
And Skeleton Creek comes off. So those, those are done deals, if you wanna line them off, so.
And the, the Skeleton Creek, it came in at one point, almost 1.3 million, so.
We gained what we were short of. So we know that, that Coltrane Phase One is going to be a priority, especially since we brought STP on in, right? And then we're adding, as far as this goes, we're adding the Waterloo I-35.
Is that in the job piece number associated with the kid?
There's a JP number that they already have that says that we can join in on that.
Okay, so we'll use that, we'll use that JP number for this list.
But I don't have that number at this time.
Are we looking at?
I can, I think I still got it somewhere.
Okay, so we're looking at 3 million on that one?
I think that's what we, we talked about. $3 million.
Thousand, two and a half.
Okay, so, and then the Crescent Bridge Creek, that's, um, a million, approximately a million two.
Yeah, I think that's way high on that estimate. That's what they estimated it at. And it is shovelled already.
Okay, yep. Yep, that Luther Road is close to shovel ready, but.
It's not there yet.
So if we were to go Coltrane Phase One, Waterloo I-35, Monty's Bridge, and I'm only doing that because Waterloo and Luther are district, both district two. So if we went Coltrane One, Waterloo, Crescent Creek Bridge and Luther, those are, other than we're adding Waterloo, we had two projects come off.
Right.
Um, that's essentially putting us at three, six, about $8 million?
Uh, actually, actually, a, a million less because, well, $900,000 less because we got
Right.
Federal funds that are gonna be coming into the Coltrane project.
And it doesn't sound like it's really gonna matter what.
I think this, what they estimated here was 2 million and change.
So two, five, six, but you've got Luther left on just down at the bottom and it was on for three. So you're still running 28, 9 million?
Yeah, okay, here, there we go. It was 2,57,000.
I'm good with that.
So I measure 23, 24, 22. But then I warned everybody.
342.
Well, you can choose not to and not do Waterloo, but you already signed an agreement.
I know. Oh, no, no, Waterloo is the priority. There's no question about that.
And we, we said as a board, we'd make it our priority after, after, well, based on what we thought was gonna be let is what we said we'd make it a priority after that.
So Coltrane, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. Coltrane Phase One, I'll put it number one. Number two is Waterloo I-35. Uh, three becomes Crescent Creek Bridge and four becomes Luther Road.
Correct.
And I will type the sheet up as Shannon said can be done and send it off.
Who's gonna send it?
Shannon and CED manager number five.
Sweet.
I bet you I actually send one and like.
Okay, so the, um, uh, CERF funds for Coltrane Phase One, according to this contract that we're, the resolution is 2,57,342 dollars. And the federal grants, federal grant money is 927,885 dollars. And so with that, I'll open, I'll entertain a, uh, motion for our five-year plan.
Make a motion to accept the order in which these projects are going.
I'll say it.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to, uh, accept the order of Coltrane Phase One, Waterloo I-35, Crescent Creek Bridge, and then Luther Road, two miles. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. All right, item six. Item six, so that's the resolution for the Coltrane Road project, Phase One.
I'm not making a motion for a further.
So I could have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, fellas.
They're actually working on Skeleton Creek project. They just finished Speaker Creek project.
So we'll cycle down to item 12. Any citizens desiring to be heard? Hearing none. Item 13, comments, announcements, questions by the board of county commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for item 14.
I'll move adjourned.
A second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.